I call the June 16th, 2025 regular school board meeting to order at 6 o'clock PM. And what we have with pledge, Dr. Salasat.
Yes, sir.
What number would you like to pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. Honor Texas's flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one indivisible.
Please remain standing for a moment. You all may be seated. Well, I'd like to roll call Mr. Montes.
Yes, sir. Mr. Donald Henderson. Mr. Martin Castillo. Mr. Jesus Maya. Ms. Letty Quintero. Mr. Ruben Terino.
President.
Ms. Sandra Garcia.
President.
I am present. Mr. Kevin Montes, Dr. Salasat.
President.
And Ms. Casey, dear board.
Thank you, Mr. Montes. Item five on the agenda is public audience. We don't have anyone sign up. Item six, further comment. Do you have anyone sign up for that? None of that. Okay, before we begin with item seven, let me welcome everyone here tonight. We know that it's summer and we appreciate everyone has to work in Utah, time to attend this meeting. We appreciate you all being there. Item seven, Dr. Salasat, public hearing, optional flexible school day program.
Yes, Mr. Henderson, members of the board, if we are going to provide a stadium optional flexible school day program, we must hold a public hearing. So tonight we can kind of with the, with the public hearing. Who, who is present? Mr. Duncan, would you come up to the left-hand place and open up our public hearing? At the end of our public hearing, we'll open up for members of the audience, members of the board, for any comments or questions.
Thank you, Dr. Salasat, President Henderson, members of the board, and public audience. As Dr. Salasat said, this is a public hearing where we're going to review the district's intent to apply for permission to continue our optional flexible school day program. Our optional flexible school day program only occurs at our college, career, and technical academy program, CCTA. So that is the only location where we have the optional flexible program. And basically, this program, just as it sounds, it allows students to attend classes on a flexible school day program. Eligibility. In the state of Texas, if a district is approved to be able to run an optional flexible school day program, students can only be eligible to participate if they meet one of four criteria factors. The first one is the student is identified as being at risk of dropping out. Second criteria point is that a student may be experiencing credit denial due to poor attendance. Third, student is part of a designated early college high school. Or fourth, student is attending an innovative campus plan. Again, all of our students that attend our CCTA program, which is where we have our optional flexible program, those students, we serve primarily students that we've been identified that they're two or more credits behind their, their present cohort. And they're also experiencing a specific extenuating circumstance. And you can see on the slide the key circumstances that they're most likely have been experiencing. Pregnancy, they've dropped out for one reason or another. Maybe struggling with a mental health issue, runaway, teen parents, or working teens. Students that had to leave school in order to help support families, so for, for work purposes. That's why you got, you got a lot of students that go to CCTA for that, that particular reason. At CCTA.
One moment. Yes, sir.
What would you say over the years, has the number been increasing or has it been staying?
If, we are now probably strategically bringing the numbers down. With the, and I'm going to kind of get into it a little bit, with the requirement of making sure the students don't only graduate with a diploma, but also have an IBC, okay, those industry-based certificates. It really becomes important to keep kids on the regular campus. So we're really pushing to lower the number. So we are seeing the numbers go down. We've made it. We've really pushed it to try to work with the kids at the campus to lower the number. So they are going down. As far as at CCTA, students, we do receive attendance. We, we, they're under a different attendance system. So basically, students that are at CCTA, their attendance is completed by actual seat time. So every day, there is a, there's a sign-in, log-in, and out, and that's how PMS is able to determine their, what they filed with TEA for, for attendance, and it's actual the minutes. And they must, they couldn't, in order for students to receive any type of attendance credit, the minimum they could be there is 45 minutes. They have to be there at least 45 minutes. If a student comes and he's only there for 30 minutes, there's no, there's no entry. So they have to be there a minimum of 45 minutes. There's also a maximum. They're not allowed to go over 10 hours in a day or exceed again for those seat time minutes. They should not go over 43,200 minutes per course in a given year. So we have to constantly track these as far as what we're submitting for, for attendance. Again, under the optional flexible day, so we have kids, maybe they're working in the morning and then coming to CCTA in the afternoon for two or three hours. Or vice versa. They may have afternoon or evening jobs where they're coming in the morning. Possibly maybe they're struggling with childcare, only have childcare in the morning, so going in the afternoon. So that's what usually drives the, as far as their schedules. Campus goals at CCTA. The number one goal is to prevent reduced dropout rates and to increase graduation rates. As we've said before, sometimes in a student's life, life happens, and sometimes there is one of those extenuating circumstances where maybe there's a hardship in the home and a student has to go to work to help support family, or there's an unplanned pregnancy, something of that sort. Those are the kids that, where CCTA does become an option so that they don't just drop out and we can try to get them to the finish line to get that diploma. The traditional hours that it's open, we start with eight to four. But then we also work in evening hours. We had a couple of evenings this year that we were open for students where we realized they could only come between five and seven because they're working during the fold day. So they would come after work. We also have Saturday, if students are, if they can only come on Saturday, we open on Saturday. We flex those teacher times so that they can meet whatever works for the students. Campus goal number two goes to the question that Mr. Montes asked as far as, again, industry-based certifications. The state has challenged all public schools. The goal is not only to just graduate with a diploma, but to also graduate with an industry-based certification. So we want every single kid to graduate with an industry-based certification. We're continuing this over at CCTA. So you can see some of the certifications that they can, that they can challenge. We have had the ones that we've been most successful with, phlebotomy. We've had kids at CCTA get their phlebotomy certificate, welding, and 911 dispatch. Those have been the more popular ones that those kids have been able to. And we've, we've actually had, our CTE teachers have been great. We've bought out conference periods, had them go over and work specifically with CTE kids during the day to get them ready for the IBCs and then to prepare them for those tests.
Yes, so these students, I think if the 100 we saw last year, so do all 100% mostly finish with an industry-based certificate? What percentage were you?
I don't have the exact percentage, but we are, we, we push them, we strongly encourage them to do it. We're kind of, as we're tracking them through their, their credits and they're getting to the end, we start talking about, okay, we've got to have that plan for after, what's next? And we do, we, we set up visits to colleges, things like that. We're doing that. But we push the, the industry-based certification.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald, Dr. Salasat.
So from the time that we set up the CCTA over 15 years ago, we wanted to not just graduate them from high school, but bridge them, you know, bridge to post-secondary. For many of the kids, it's through TSC or TSTC. A lot of times, the kids are not with us long enough to be able to earn industry-based certification. So if you're only lacking five or six credits, they make that up while they're with us. They get their diploma for graduation and then they move on to post-secondary. But if they are lacking a significant number of credits, then there's time for them to get their credits for graduation and be working towards an industry-based certification. So the number of kids that actually graduate with an IBC is minimal at this center of the equipment. Because again, they're only coming part-time, it's on a flexible schedule, and it's difficult to get them certified. But when there's an opportunity, we absolutely work at it.
There is a committee when a student applies to go to CCTA. It's a committee. So it's not just one person, it's not just Mr. Stambaugh or one counselor. It's a committee. Mr. Real, Mr. Stambaugh, our Ms. Quinier, school counselor, they'll look at it. And that's one of the things that we're really looking carefully now is where is he on that, in, in working towards that IBC? And explaining that to kids, starts on where that IBC is for future employment. And seeing if at all possible, you know, we can work something out through T or other programs that we have at the high school to not have to go. It's, it's, that's the last option. Goal number three, again, just as Dr. Stambaugh said, credit cruel process. That's the, that is the main thing. The students that go to CCTA, they're struggling, they're behind in their credits. It's, it's working with them, tracking. Every kid has a tracking sheet. It's a constant working with, there's a counselor at CCTA, Mr. Real, the teachers constantly working on where they're at, helping them through their, as they're working through their modules, but trying to get them back on track so that they can hopefully catch up and graduate with their, with their cohort. That's the, that is the goal. And I'll show you some of the, the graduation numbers in a slide that is, that is coming up. They are still, students that go to CCTA, they still have to meet start and of course requirements. So it does not remove that requirement. They still have to come in and test. We have tutorial sessions. We had, we, we had, they're very well-attended, I would say, this year, towards the end. Of students, they were coming in for the tutorial sessions. We test there at, at CCTA, so they still have to pass those end-of-course exams. There's not, there's not a way around that. And so we have, I was there today. There's kids, and kids today that are at CCTA, working through their credits. And again, doing those tutorial sessions, getting ready for EOC because we have, we have summer administrations as well.
Mr. Montes, so is this available to all students? I know you labeled some here, one through seven, but some based on base cases? The students behind on credit or is this available for all of students?
It's a great question. It is, it's case by case. It's an application. You have to complete the application. You have to come before the committee. And that's the important thing, is the committee, the committee to really go through the pros and cons with them and look at, is this really, is this, is this the best situation? Is this what that student needs? So depending upon the extenuating circumstances. But again, what we've tried to do now is constantly more towards what can we do to help you at the high school, to keep you at the high school.
Mr. Montes, it's a, it's a great question. I'm going to be a little more direct. The answer is no. Because if we're not careful, kids will say, well, I'll just go to that center over there where I can go whenever I can and I'll get my credits there, finish off my IBC. No, we need you working on this many, we need you at the high school with your cohort. This was set up as a dropout recovery center. The kids would just left school for different circumstances, but we invite them to come back. Or just figure out, I can't, it's because I can't go to school every day. Don't worry, we have an optional flexible school day program. Then we'll, we'll give you credit for attendance on the days you can come. So you can hold your job, you can take care of your child and come and if they're still attending. There was, there was a time when we even opened up evening classes because that was the need, those were the needs of our business and role. So is it applicable to everyone? The answer would be no, it's not tailored for everyone. It's tailored for those who just can't attend school without, who without this program, there's no way that we finish, I said.
That's the key point that the committee is looking at. So when that application comes in, it's just someone looking for, okay, that looks like the easier path. That's where the committee's going to say, no, it's best for you to remain at the high school.
It's, it's going to turn upside down real fast.
Just to give you an idea of some numbers, comparison numbers over the past two years. So 23, 24 school year, we had 58 students from CCTA that graduated in May. A month ago, we had 60. Okay, so pretty similar. I've gone up a little, a little bit there. We do have students right now, you can see, a year ago, we had nine that completed their credits and, and testing requirements for the August graduation, for our summer graduation. This year, hoping to have 12. So you can see 67 in 23, 24, hope to be 72 for this August. All depending if they, if they reach the finish line on their credits. This completes our, our presentation. Any other questions that I can answer?
If the public have any questions, you can approach the podium. No questions. Thank you, Mr. McDonald. It sounded like a great program. Dr. Salasat, do you want to add something?
No, sir. Just I wanted to comment, the 72 students who we expect, we project will graduate, they don't belong to a single cohort. There are only four, maybe even five members of five, five different cohorts. That's a very small, a relatively small percentage of a graduating class, of a group that make a graduating class. But still, it is optional flexible school day program. We say doable for kids who would, otherwise say like, no, overall, there's no chance I'm going to finish my, my high school diploma, get all the requirements for my high school diploma, and they see that they can go to school. We purposely named it College Career Center, CCTA, College Career and Technical Academy, so that kids can say, where do you go to school? I went to the College Career and Technical Center. There's, there's hope and we're working with the end in mind. So thank you for considering supporting the optional flexible school day program. There's an item on the agenda that would give us board approval to submit the application. We have to be able to show when we brought it to the board before we submit it to TEA.
Thank you, Dr. Salasat. Any other questions, Mr. Montes?
You know, I just want to take a shout-out to the staff. You know, I think that's a great program that we have here, you know, giving the kids a chance to graduate. You know, certain tests do happen, you know, in life, but you know, great job, Mr. McDonald, to the committee, and all the staff who was in that, in that program. It's a great job.
If the trustee will allow me, I'm going to go ahead and move to an item, this is tonight, item 29. So let's move to item 10. Point 13, new employee hires. Discuss and take action to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations for the following provisions for the 2025, 2026 school year. A, teachers, B, registered nurses, C, athletic trainers, and D, assistant principals. Do I have a motion? Mr. McKeon?
Motion to approve supertrans recommendations for A, teachers, B, registered nurses, C, athletic trainers, and D, assistant principals.
Second, Mr. McKeon, discussion. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carried unanimously. Well, thank you so much. I do see members in the audience, so what I was going to do tonight, I think it's a very special one we haven't done before you've joined us. If you're here and I need your name and your campus, if you please, stand up so we can acknowledge you. Mr. Will, take that item. Well, presence united. Janet Rocha, LFU. Nicholas Miles. LFU. Adicia Garcia, LFU. Mario Perez, LFU. Julia Carrones, LFU. Noye Carrones Jr., LFU. Jana Flores, Career and Technical Education Center. Studek Cortez, RMS, LMS, and LCMS. Sandra Solis, Living Memorial. Gabriela Garza, Living Memorial. Cassandra Vecia, LFU. Tamara Cruz Sanchez, Franchuverne. Elizra, Franchuverne. Chiqui Cere, LFU. Kimberly Serben, Registered Nurse, Los Cuates. Leslie Vasquez, Athletic Trainer, LFU. Jamie Galvane, Assistant Principal, Villarreal. And Gabriela Perez, Alamo Lasto. On behalf of the board trustees, we welcome you to your great decisions to come to our presence. We appreciate your family supporting you in this condition. Thank you for coming out tonight. We know your family's here, but we'll hug the family, kiss them, we can acknowledge them. Please. We say thank you for coming out in summer. Please feel free to leave. You're welcome. You stay if you like. But we have, the rest of the board meeting will run kind of long. So feel free to go out of home, have dinner, and relax, and we look forward to seeing you soon at the campuses. And thank you, Ms. Alaya.
Hey, we should make a, make a speech, write something. We should make a, make a speech.
Okay, item number seven, district reports. Financial reports, April quarter reports, decalization reports, C summary revenue expenditure status reports, D monthly difference, E budget adjustments, F capital project funds. Do we have any discussion or question coming in those items? I was just going to ask a question on item F, Mr. Gazadua, I think on capital projects. The estimated arbitrage payable out of July calculation. I don't ever seen that before. Is that a new note or is that, I just didn't notice it?
No, that was something that was, that was a calculation that we had determined and now that we actually have a number, we always try to put it in play to make sure that we, you know, have it.
Great, perfect. Thank you so much.
My friend on the board, sir, that the local capital projects, we are, we see some movement in the local capital projects. We are replacing the roof on it. That's something we have to do.
Thank you so much. Next item, capital programs update. Any questions? Discussion, taxable, Ms. Garcia.
So I just want to make one comment because as I was going through it, you know, you first get your board packet, that's what you're about to do. So I know it takes us a while to get through it, but I became very aware that it takes even longer to put it together. So I just wanted to take a minute to like thank all of y'all, like. I don't know who puts it together. I don't know who bookmarks it. But I see that all of the cabinet's involved with your members. So I just wanted to say thank you because you make our job easier. Sometimes we have questions and the answer is right. So, but just even bookmarking and everything, it just, I was very thankful because it was a lot to go through and it just, what you all do makes it so much easier. So thank you.
Thank you. Great comment, Ms. McKeon. Next item, tax, taxable value audit update. Any comments? Item four, crop report update. I just thought that was interesting and I appreciate you coming to Salasat, putting that on the agenda. I think this is like once a year, I want to say you saw it, I'll add it. Maybe you could add to it. What is it? It seems to me that you're really making value, creating income for us through this particular asset that would normally be unperforming.
Thank you. I'm going to pay credit for that. That property has been leased to one of our farmers for many, many years. After a recent statistics committee meeting where we visited the site, took you all to the site of a couple of school sites, this particular property we owned for years. And I thought it was important to take you all out to see the different corners, see exactly where it's located. And although it was, there were crops in the ground, no one asked. And I thought it was important to, to share with you that, yeah, we've had a lease with Mr. Charrington for many years. So a question the board might ask is like, so who's we get out of that? So it's relatively minimal that we get and we profit share with the farmer. And sometimes they just, they're usually just break even. But I thought it was important for you all to see how much we get from leasing that property to a farmer. And then there's another factor that you don't see is we're not mowing it. And we haven't been mowing it for the past 40 years. So we would have to have additional staff, additional equipment, so the property is producing. Well, I think it's sort of, it's on their, it's for the tutorials, it's bringing in a little revenue. Still owned by the district and the more important thing is we're not having a retain.
Any questions? Mr. Montes?
Sir, somebody come out here. I don't know what I pressed, the agenda, everything.
Okay, we'll get somebody to help.
Just one comment. So we said that price on the, on the April show.
That the agreement is a percentage of the, a percentage of the profit that the farmer makes. So we shared the expense of producing the crop.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Item five, trustee reports. Yes.
What was in there?
Trustee reports, we started it at one thing in last month. And it's just, if the trustee wants to report back on activity, event, or attended, just put this on the district.
Up with the district?
Yes.
So like I'll start if you don't mind. At first, I want to do a shout-out. I know trustee is here, so we were all at a conference Wednesday, so they probably said it's a lot of work. But something that most of you all didn't see, except I think Mr. Montes, at 10:30 at night, I was in a meeting downstairs with Dr. Salasat because our policy required us to review the agenda. And rather than just skipping it, Dr. Salasat said, don't worry, I'll come downstairs, meet you at 10:30 at night. And we were there till almost midnight. That's a lot. He had activities all day and work, and I just think that's outstanding. It just shows leadership. And I know this staff, everyone knows what kind of man he is, but I mean, I was just amazed that, you know, he's like, no, don't worry, I'm interested. You're driving in, whatever time you get in, I'll meet you. And he was there and took time to go over the whole agenda. And I just thought that was fantastic. And I think you all need to know that as well. The other thing I wanted to acknowledge.
The other thing I wanted to acknowledge, it was amazing at graduation, my fourth year, the work that your staff, I'm gonna start with custodial, I'm not leaving one out, but the custodial maintenance, Mr. Marieth, making that stadium shine, it's sparkle. Security, keep us safe, and then you go to the teachers, and you see all the hard work they've been doing for years, because that didn't happen in one night, that stadium's crickety, and we see the accumulation, and we get to shake hands with them and see all that work. And I really want to say, Mr. Stoneball, I was out there, and I know we've talked about this before, but he knows every student, not just the top ten, the top ten percent, but all seven hundred eighty-nine, I don't remember his exact number, but he acknowledged each one, they know them, he knows them by name, and I'm thinking, the trustee, that's what we're trying to get to, when we have that personal connection. It keeps some of these students in form, not just the top ten percent. That's easy, or easier, but I guess Florida, I think you'll, I'm sure next year, look at it again, and you'll notice that as well. So anyone else? Mr. Trivino?
I'd just like to make a comment. I'd like to make a comment regarding the Summer Leadership Institute, you know, that's one of my favorite conferences. I think we get really good information from that conference to bring forward and things to kind of be on our radar. So I, and I also, so I enjoyed that thoroughly, and I know we are, we're all in classes and getting that information. Mr. Henderson and I were asked to participate in something that's coming up, and you'll be hearing more about it, an advocacy group, advocacy for public schools, and so that's something that's up and coming within the area to advocate for our region, specifically for our region. I was really impressed with the people and the groups that they have included thus far, as far as the advocacy, and so that's something that we're gonna be discussing here in the in the future, so that we can really make sure that our voices are heard here at the region and in our region. So many times whenever I participated, it's part of the lack. And you're talking about the entire state of Texas, and yes, you bring your needs to the table, but then you're meeting with the entire state of Texas, well, out of our five needs, we may get one that makes it to the top, and so then that's diluted, and so that's, the effort is, we may benefit, right? May benefit from that one. So I was really happy to see what work is being done and hopeful that the advocacy that we all should be doing, you know, all of us as elected officials should use that voice to encourage our state reps and our senators to support public education, and as we know right now, that's not the climate. But nonetheless, we need to continue working, and even that much harder, so anything that will bring life to public education and the great things that are going on in our region, I think we should get behind, but more to come.
Thank you, Mr. Trivino. Anyone else? Item number nine, consent agenda. Item one through twenty-six. Would anyone like to pull an item? If not, I'll adjourn motion to approve. Mr. Ortega?
I move to approve items number one through twenty, on consent, twenty-six, on consent agenda.
Okay, you have a motion, you have a second? Mr. Castillo?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Action item ten, one, discuss and take action to approve budget amendment number ten for fiscal year 2024-2025. Do you have a motion? Mr. Trivino?
Yes, Mr. Henderson, I move the board approve budget amendment number ten for fiscal year 2024-2025.
If you have a second? Mr. Montes? Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Item ten, two, discuss and take action to approve the renewal agreement contracts for group health, third party administrator, and stop loss insurance for the period one-one 2026 through twelve thirty-one 2026 with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas. Do you have a motion? Mr. Montes?
Motion to approve, sir.
Have a motion to approve, you have a second? Ms. Castillo? Any discussion? All in favor? Please raise your hands. Motion carries. Item number three, discuss and take action to approve substantial completion of the Villarreal Elementary HVAC unit replacement. Do you have a motion? Mr. Castillo?
Motion to approve, sir.
Do you have a second? Mr. Montes?
A second.
Discussion? All in favor? Please raise your hands. Motion carries unanimously. Discuss and take action to ratify change order number two for the Performing Arts Center. Do you have a motion? Mr. Castillo?
Yes, I move to approve the change order number two for the Performing Arts Center.
I have a motion, you have a second? Mr. Trivino? Discussion? All in favor? Please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Item five, discuss and take action to approve the ranking of vendors for CSP number two-four dash two-five dash two-one, CTE Building Re Roofing Project. Do you have a motion? Ms. Castillo?
I move that the board approve the ranking of the contractors for the CTE Building Re Roofing Project, and authorize the superintendent to negotiate with the top ranked contractor for the project, and go on to the next rate until an agreeable contract can be reached for a fair and reasonable price, and further authorize the superintendent to execute such contract in a form approved by legal.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo. You have a motion, second? Mr. Trivino, discussion? All in favor? Please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Item six, discuss and take action to approve a declaration that certain district assets are surplus and authorize administration to dispose of said vehicle as appropriate. Do you have a motion? Mr. Trivino?
Yes, Mr. Henderson, I move that the board approve a declaration that certain district assets are surplus and authorize administration to dispose of said vehicles as appropriate.
Do you have a motion, you have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Castillo, discussion? I will add this, I know that eleven thirty PM meeting on Wednesday night, that Dr. Salazar goes through, he's a great producer, he goes through and looks at every vehicle, I know we all rebuild packets, and we see the picture of the bus with the problem they have, but again, we go through these stats, but the due diligence is there, and we appreciate that, taking care of district assets. All in favor? Please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Action, action item number seven, discuss and take action to approve the agreement contract for capera furniture to Edgey Sports Corporation from interlocal purchasing cooperative, A, Los Angeles United, B, Villarreal Elementary. Do you have a motion? Mr. Montes?
Motion to approve, sir.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Castillo? Discussion? Ms. Ortega?
Yeah, I forgot to call and ask this question, but on LFU, is that, are we adding, or are we, did we just run out of, this isn't that new?
It's recent, but there's been a lot of wear and tear on the round seats, some types of seats, there's some, some are here and others, and so the seats will wear, and they have to be replaced, but Mr. Pinales here, a chartered, can you expand on, give some further description on what we expect to do at Los Angeles United, what furniture will be replaced, we still consider it relatively new campus.
Yes, so, Mr. Henderson, members of the board, Dr. Salazar, and district staff, what we're placing is just seating, there are old tables, and so just like Dr. Salazar was mentioning, they're breaking pretty easy, they're pretty old, and some of these were carried on, there was a renovation towards the back of LFU, and so you look at those tables, they have been brought up from other campuses, some booths that are there, and so what we're doing is just we're placing all tables, because there has been a danger to pass where they break, and to have a metal pipe just sticking right through, and they're breaking pretty easy. They're pretty, pretty old.
Los Angeles United hosted a lot of district events for a long time, and every time we pick them up and move them, and set them back down, they have to do that between lunch sessions, also between, so it just wears on the equipment, but thank you for staying on top of it.
Yes, always. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pinales, for that update, we appreciate it. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Please raise your hands. Okay, we'll note that the board, and Montes, if you can talk for a moment. Item number eight, discuss and take action to approve revision to the TASB policy local to be adopted in the first reading. Do you have a motion? Mr. Trivino?
Yes, Mr. Henderson, I move the board approve revisions to the TASB policy CFB local to be adopted in the first reading.
Thank you, Ms. Trivino, you have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Ortega, any discussion? All in favor? Please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously, and Mr. Montes, I'll go with that one.
Thank you.
Item number nine, discuss and take action to endorse a candidate to fill a position on the TASB Board of Directors for Region One, Position B. Do you have a motion? Mr. Trivino?
Yes, Mr. Henderson, I move that the board endorse a candidate to fill a position on the TASB Board of Directors for Region One, Position B.
Very good.
May I, is it Sylvia? Sylvia Sanchez Garza.
Thank you, so Sylvia Sanchez Garza, for Position, Region One, Position B, have a motion, you have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Montes, thank you. Discussion? I know Mr. Meyer, if you miss, will send you a full background, Ms. Ortega, if you have any, or Mr. Trivino, do you have some background?
Yes, she serves as a board member on South Texas ISD. Sorry, long date, but yes, she's a board member of South Texas ISD, she also served as TASB, as a TASB director, very dependable, always there, cares for the students of this region, and so I feel very comfortable in making that nomination for her and recommending her.
Not just that, I find you're very approachable, also very, she'll come down and speak for us, and she's not, she's not in the area, right? She's from like Denver or something? So, yeah, I would support her because of how approachable and how available she is to us, and has been, she's one of the incumbent on the, on the TASB board, which does a good job.
Thank you, Ms. Ortega. Thank you, Ms. Trivino. I also, you know, have been able to get to know her at different events, Mr. Meyer presented to Perry Truman several years ago, and like Mr. Castillo, Mr. Trivino, and Ms. Ortega say, she's very available, she's always involved, always present, and so again, no reservation there. Any other discussion? All in favor? Please raise your hand.
I'll second.
Do we have a second? Did Ms. Ortega a second? I don't remember.
She seconded.
Mr. Montes, second.
Okay.
Thank, all in favor? Please raise your hands. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. I intend to discuss and ratify the purchase of Euphoria for the 2024-2025 and the 2025-2026 school year. Do you have a motion? Ms. Ortega?
I'll move to endorse, I mean, to ratify the purchase of Euphoria for the 2024-2025 and the 2025-2026 school year.
Do you have a motion, you have a second? Mr. Montes?
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor? Please raise your hands. Motion carries unanimously. Item eleven, discuss and take action to approve the professional hiring schedule for the 2025-2026 school year, subject to funding availability. Do you have a motion? Ms. Trivino?
Mr. Henderson, I move that the board approve the professional hiring schedule for the 2025-2026 school year, subject to funding availability.
Very good, I have a motion, you have a second?
Mr. Castillo?
Discussion? Discussion, definitely, Montes?
So, let's say we put them through the hiring process, and there's no funds available, do we pound a hole, or do they have to go through the interview process again until the funds are available? How's that?
What would happen is we would, the hiring schedule is simply determined, helps us communicate what we offer for someone coming in with X number of years of experience, so we would default to the previous year's hiring schedule. Can I tell you that?
May I?
After we posted the item on the agenda and released the agenda, we received interpretation from Commissioner Marath about how the salary increase that was approved by the legislature must impact the, it must be reflected on the hiring schedule. So now likely, we see this item again, it's not uncommon for us to bring it several times, more than once in a, in a new budget cycle, but we're going to last verification on that communication from the commissioner, and see how it's supposed to impact, and we may or may not bring this item back, but at least we have something in place that we can offer candidates who are looking for employment with us.
Thank you, Dr. Salazar, good question. Any other questions? Discussion? Okay, all in favor? Please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Item twelve, discuss and take action to approve EAE, UIL, academic supplements and salary supplements for the 2025-2026 school year. Do you have a motion? Ms. Montes?
Motion to approve, sir.
I have a motion, you have a second? Mr. Trivino? Discussion? All in favor? Please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Item thirteen, you're covered, we're looking at forty to basically eleven, closed session, nothing to discuss, nothing in open session, announcements, Dr. Salazar.
We will be shutting down, we're sustaining normal operations a week over the Fourth of July, something we've been doing for a couple of years now, so the entire district will be closed, starting on the thirtieth, and then the second announcement that we have is that we're back here for the July meeting on July sixteenth. I will be reaching out to you, there's a need to make some decisions, or the administration's and I guess based on some of the legislation that you heard about, including what are we gonna do with cell phones, what are we gonna do with the library advisory committee, and whether we are going to adopt a resolution, whether we're going to allow or not allow homeschoolers to participate in extracurricular activities, or whether we're gonna set time aside for the reading of religious texts or prayer in our schools, the seven to eleven requires some of that. So before we place an item, we'll work out with you all, let's see, give you an opportunity to, to talk to some of the decisions that you'll have to make in the July meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Salazar. Time is six forty-seven, beginning the journey.